We'd like to open up Mahoney County Commissioners Meeting Number Forty-Six, Thursday, November thirtieth. Would everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, good morning, good morning. Ah, today's a good day.
This is such.
We, um, always have too much bad news, so this is
I'm so glad.
an agenda filled with good news, so. We look forward, so, anyway. What do you think, Anthony?
I agree.
Nice weather outside.
Do you think Carol, maybe?
Carol, poor Carol, um, she's wearing her mask, but, uh,
I'm negative, I just want you to know.
Test is negative. But, uh, yes. Oh, good. Nancy La Boy, our Clerk of the Board, is still vacationing in Texas. You know, we're all upset that it's warmer where she's at than it is where we are. But it's gonna be nice today. So, anyway. Jerry, you can, maybe if we get out of here early, you could help me. I got one spot left on my garage to paint that I can't reach. I need a tall guy over there. Maybe Ron Evans. He's like eight feet tall, white. There he is. We get Ron. There he is. We'll make sure it's after four. You take an hour's vacation to reach that peak. All right, well, we'll first open it up for public comments. If anyone would like to, uh, address the board, we ask you to come to the podium. Give you three minutes, state your name and address. Okay. Seeing none, we'll move on to approval of previous minutes of Board Meeting Number Forty-Five, Tuesday, November twenty-first, twenty-twenty-three, and approval of bills for payment.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Remedia Rogetti.
Yes.
Commissioner Traficani.
Yes.
Commissioner Ditzler.
Yes. Journal entries.
Motion to approve journal entry number one.
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Remedia Rogetti.
Yes.
Commissioner Traficani.
Yeah.
Commissioner Ditzler.
Yes. Agreements. Convention and visitors bureau, Linda.
Good morning, everyone. Um, letter A is an agreement with travel boards who handles all of the advertising along the Ohio Turnpike in the service plazas, and this is for advertising on backwood signs in five different locations, non-general, in the amount of twelve thousand, three hundred seventy-five dollars.
Beautiful, thank you. Engineers.
Good morning, Commissioners. Hello, Jerry.
Hi, Pat.
Letter, letter B is an agreement with commercial truck and trailer, uh, for repairs to vehicle number one thirteen, in the estimated amount of three thousand, eight hundred, seventy-six dollars and nineteen cents. Letter C is an agreement with TSI Western Star. This is for repairs to vehicle sixty-six, in the estimated amount of one hundred eighty-seven dollars. And letter D is modification number one with OHM Advisors, uh, to provide a working hydraulic model for the Mahoney Avenue Industrial Corridor Upgrade Project, in the amount of seven thousand, nine hundred dollars. And all three of those are non-general funds.
Okay, thank you, Pat. Jobs and family, Audrey.
Good morning, Commissioners. Good morning, Audrey, Holly, good morning, Jim Fortunato. Letter E, job and family services. This is a memorandum of agreement with the Columbiana County Department of Job and Family Services to provide assistance for Mahoney County's childcare provider inspection program, effective November eighth, twenty-twenty-three, in the amount of three thousand, non-general.
Okay, thank you. All right, sanitary.
Uh, Commissioners, letter, letter F is an agreement mechanical, uh, for contracting services at the Meander wastewater treatment plant in the amount of thirty-four thousand dollars. Um, this is to replace some stand pipes that are beginning to slip in our tanks. We want to get this done before, uh, winter, uh, before the tanks, uh, freeze up. These are non-general funds.
Okay. Thank you, Pat. Motion to approve agreements.
Motion to approve agreements, letters A through F.
Second. Roll call.
Commissioner Remedia Rogetti.
Yes.
Commissioner Traficani.
Yes.
Commissioner Ditzler.
Yes. Okay, appointments, Commissioners. Reappoint the following individuals to serve on the Mahoney County Planning Commission Board, effective January first, twenty-twenty-four, for a three-year term. Attorney Mark Fortunato, Joseph Coke Senior, and John McCarthy. Commissioners, reappoint the following individuals to serve on the Mahoney County Convention and Visitors Advisory Board, effective January first, twenty-twenty-four, for two years. Adam Pandillo, Colleen Kelly, and H. William Lawson. Do I have a motion for appointments? Linda, before I, uh,
Yes.
move, Pat, I'm sorry, um, do you want to say anything with respect to the appointments on the convention visitors?
Um, I will just say that Adam Pandillo and, uh, Bill Lawson were originally appointed to fill unexpired seats, so this will be for a full two-year term. Adam is now the General Manager at Holiday and Boardman, and Bill Lawson, Executive Director at the Mahoney Valley Historical Society. And then Colleen Kelly, um, this is a reappointment for her. She's with YBI. All three are very, um, excellent board members. We have good conversations and appreciate the reappointment.
Okay, excellent. Then with A, on the planning commission, uh, the three of us sit on the planning commission board as well, and John McCarthy adds a lot of value with respect to being a realtor. Joe Coke is a builder. He gives a good perspective. And attorney Mark Fortunato, um, do you know anything about him, Jim?
I'm better looking.
You're better looking. Mark Fortunato.
I like that one.
It's, is a wealth of knowledge and adds great value to it, so, uh, thank you for reminding me of that. Okay, a motion to approve appointments.
Motion to approve appointments, A and B.
Second. Roll call.
Commissioner Remedia Rogetti.
Yes.
Commissioner Traficani.
Yes.
Commissioner Ditzler.
Yes. Resolutions.
Motion to approve resolutions, number one additions.
Second. Roll call.
Commissioner Remedia Rogetti.
Yes.
Commissioner Traficani.
Yes.
Commissioner Ditzler.
Yes. Record of bids, treasurers. I thought, sure, Daniel?
Yes, good morning, everyone.
How are you, sir?
Am I supposed to give a special
Yes.
to the sheriff?
Yes, absolutely.
Morning.
Morning, Dan. Anyway, this is our, uh, we went to bid with our tax bill preparation printing, and then, uh, we have received one bid, but it's a good one, so we've worked out to, uh, you know, for a free place, and we'll get the same company that's doing it now for us. So, uh, I, once again, have to make sure I thank purchasing Jim and Megan for guiding us through this process. Thank you.
Okay, Dan, thank you. Motion to approve record of bids.
Motion to approve record of bids to A.
Second. Roll call.
Commissioner Remedia Rogetti.
Yes.
Commissioner Traficani.
Yes.
Commissioner Ditzler.
Yes. Okay, resolutions. Commissioners, O M B. Audrey, you want to, uh,
Do the first one. Commissioners, uh, resolution approving the following voucher for Ohio Rice Code Fifty- Seven Oh Five Point Four One in the following amount per department. Um, this was a hundred and seventy-five dollars, uh, just for bonding insurance, which is a date issue.
Okay.
I can skip to C and then you can do B. Okay?
Oh, um, okay, yeah.
Um, item C is a resolution approving the cash advance repayment from Polandway TIPS Fund to the general fund in the amount of eighty-two thousand, three forty-three. This was advanced that we did early on when the tip was, uh, established. The funds are now in there and it can be repaid back to the general fund.
Gotcha. Okay. And on B, resolution approving an agreement with the Western Reserve Port Authority for the implementation of the Valley Vision Twenty-Fifty Plan Partnership in the amount of one million dollars. You got the zeros in the right place, Audrey?
I got the zeros.
I don't know. Take one, zero, one.
No, no, who, man? Yeah, I don't, if you, if you ask. If you ask, if you ask Sarah or Guy, I'm sure that they're not, you know, they move, they need move to the right, you know?
Me and Anna would go in the other direction.
You know, we we don't always, as a board, get an opportunity to do things that, um, to try to set the stage for the future. But, um, you know, with the ARPA funds that we had, uh, this year, you know, our focus as a board has always been to, uh, to help people, businesses, communities, and infrastructure. You know, and, and we, uh, set our primary objective to make sure that we're moving forward because, you know, you can't stand still. If you're not moving forward, you're falling back. So we've, we've made it a, a, a point to, to look to, uh, technology, with the broadband and the five million plus that we've invested into the broadband initiative, uh, and we've made it an emphasis to, to emphasize on economic development for the future, for the future of the valley, for the future of Mahoney County, for the future of the kids looking for jobs, for our young people looking for jobs. So when, uh, Mahoney Valley Partnership, uh, came to us and made a presentation, it was from people that have had and been involved with boots on the ground for a long time in this valley, and they have a great reputation, they have a great background, uh, and, and when we talked, um, it was enlightening and it was eye-opening. Guy Coviallo with the Youngstown Warren Regional Chamber, uh, Lynette Ford, who is not here, I don't think, um, uh, from the, uh, Youngstown Foundation, Jim Kinnick, who is here, is Executive Director of Eastgate, uh, Anthony Trevina, uh, is the Executive Director of the Western Reserve Port Authority, being represented by Sarah Lown, who is equally of as impressive, uh, with her credentials and background as Anthony, and Teresa Miller, the Executive Director of Valley Partners. Teresa, in the back, is here. So, uh, we had a lot of discussion and we were, you know, informed about the Ernst &amp; Young, uh, study that they put forward, uh, and the Mahoney Valley, uh, the Mahoney Valley Twenty-Fifty Plan. And the way I've always looked at things is that, um, and I know that as a board, you know, we, we have a lot of some, we, we work very well as a team with respect to trying to do things, uh, that are of this impact. And I've always looked at, you know, you're trying to, to solve problems of the past, you're trying to prevent problems for the future, and, but you, you have to plant seeds. You know, none of us can fix everything that's wrong today, but if we plant seeds, you know, none of us may be here, but twenty years from now, when the tree's growing or the flowers are blooming, you know, we put those seeds in places where they were gonna have an impact on our children and our children's children. So we hope that this is one step that moves us in that direction to take and, and to really make an impact on Mahoney County and on Mahoney Valley. And, you know, this is something that, uh, you know, we're very proud to participate in. We hope that it kind of primes the pump to get Trumbull and to get Columbiana and to get everybody around in the same mindset, so that collectively, you know, we can work together and make it better for all of us. And, and what's our famous Ronald Reagan statement is that, you know, isn't it amazing how much good we can do if nobody cares who gets the credit? So, um, that's kind of where we're, we're at, and we want to move and, and I, I think I'll let Sarah, um, I, you know, initiate, uh, what we're going to do and how we're gonna do it, because, uh, as always, it's, you know, it's difficult when you're, uh, distributing funds from, uh, an account that, uh, is restricted in different ways, and if we give it to the Port Authority to initiate the Mahoney Valley Partnership, you know, it's, 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 uh, better for them to monitor, uh, everything the way it needs to be done, so, and it gives us an extra arm and, and to doing it. So, Sarah, would you like to, you know?
Thank you, Commissioners. Audrey, um, Jim, especially Jim. I, I so appreciate the vision that you have, um, and the investment you are making in the partnership agencies. Even before the Ernst &amp; Young Study, um, a lot of hard work was done by, by these gentlemen and Tru, um, to, to bring together a plan, um, that they're, we're very confident will succeed, um, and hopefully quicker than twenty-fifty, so we don't have to worry about our children's children. And let me hand it off to Guy, uh, to say a word or two. You've been in the trenches, Guy, you know best.
Sarah, thank you. Commissioners, thank you.
Guy, can you want to go to the podium?
Yeah, absolutely, please.
So what I would like to say, growing a community's economy, improving a community's quality of life does not happen within confines of a political psyche, but it's very rare find elected officials who can see beyond their political psyche. So it's very refreshing today to have a group of Commissioners here that see beyond their political psyche. Mentioned the Reagan quote, "A lot of the fruits of, of, uh, what you seeded here today won't happen until your successors are around to take credit for it." But you don't care about the credit, you care about doing what's right. So we are coming together, critical agencies across public, private, philanthropic sectors. In my lifetime of being a Mahoney Valley resident, I've never seen the level of cooperation that these five organizations have, uh, come to an agreement on. And so we are looking at growing our economy, growing our, uh, quality of life, not from an organizational perspective, and not as an organizational responsibility, but as a community responsibility. We're all stepping up to take responsibility for that. And so we look forward to engaging on this Valley Vision Twenty-Fifty Plan.
Sounds so, why did you make it twenty-fifty? My God, that sounds so ancient. Why'd you make it twenty?
You know, twenty-fifty, you and I could stand up and cut the ribbon on the success.
Honey, they'll be willy-mia. I don't know from where.
No, they won't.
Thank you, Commissioners, and, and thank you for all the partners here for, uh, you've been able to accomplish.
Jim, Teresa, please, come up and
And we also want to bring Josh up, too. Josh was, um, the one that brought off.
Josh, I'm sorry, Josh. Jo- Josh is the one that initiated the meeting and, and got us all, please. Do you have a few words?
Yeah, I, I'd just like to comment, thank the Commissioners for sharing the vision we have and seeing, uh, the success we can have when we work together. I can tell you, uh, thirty-eight years in a career being an engineer and, and now turning into more of an economic development partner, um, I recognized, uh, when I first dove into the community work, that we're all working silos, nobody's working together. We're kind of, it's, we're kind of the same old, same old, and we're not getting anywhere. By gathering the group a couple of years ago, talking about regional perspectives and how we can help move the needle forward for the region, instead of a city, or a county, or an individual, or a certain business, uh, we, we shed light on where our problems were, and it's just really not to have enough resources to continue to move the needle forward with the regional group together. This opportunity breaks down the walls of any silos. This continues to help us grow. The emphasis really, when you talk about economic development, uh, we do a lot of good things, but where are we at? You know, we got to keep working, we got to figure out what's the problems. I think one of the issues that this helps us really focus on is quality of life, uh, focuses on keeping our young people in the area, and focuses on bringing some of those people back to our area. So, uh, when we actually talk about building, growing a stronger workforce, it starts with the people we have right here and keeping them here and growing our city and our counties back to where they need to be. So, uh, thank you for the kind words. Well said, Dave. Uh, thanks for the vision, Carol and Anthony, appreciate, uh, working, our working relationship and our partnerships.
I too appreciate you guys, of course. Uh, we, uh, are very thankful for the faith that you have in us and that you put in all of our organizations. Um, as you said, not, there isn't, you know, one of us that's looking for credit for it. It's great to see that the, the credit will be that the community improves and, and everything around it. We did also, uh, I lost my train of thought.
It's because you're excited.
I am excited. Maybe that's what it is. Um, I'm excited.
Especially when they add the zero on.
Yeah. I, I'm excited to see the outcome, so we can come back and present to you guys. I'm excited to see what we can do in the community and, uh, what we can do to be more proactive in, uh, and being ready for anything that, any business or, uh, any individual that wants to be a part of our community. So we're just very excited to provide those outcomes to you guys in the next, hopefully before twenty-fifty, uh, to see all the excitement that we can do, uh, partnering together.
I think we will.
Yes, I think we will, too.
Positive outlook on, on this group.
Yes, thank you, yes. It's amazing what you can do together.
And Josh Priest, he, he has his priest public strategies, and he's the one that initiated it and, uh, and brought it to the board and initiated the connection. So Josh, please.
I know, these, these five are the more important ones, just very, it's a pleasure working with everyone and pleasure working with you all. I'm just very happy to be here today, it's exciting.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Yeah, I'd just like to say, I echo everybody's sentiments, this is a great day. You know, the old saying goes, if somebody doesn't step up, nobody will step up. And I look at this as like a football field. The goalpost is there, the goal line is there, it is set, we have the best players on the team right here in the valley. We have a brain trust. All of these individuals understand the importance of the dollars and where these dollars belong. So if you don't have a goal, then there's really nothing there to work towards. So the vision is here, okay, the work ethic is here to do this, and, uh, a lot of this came out from what happened with the pandemic. Pandemic was very hard, a lot of communities were hit very hard. So putting this in place could in fact offset anything like that that could happen again. And we look forward to seeing that this million-dollar investment will not only go to these different agencies, but it will in fact grow somewhat like a fund, because one of the things here in the valley that we've always struggled for, and I think every office holder and legislator knows it, we can't get any seed money. And when you have seed money, you can plant, you can plant the garden, and I, basically, that's what we're doing today, and twenty-fifty is, is way out there, understand. I don't like that date either, but, uh, other generations are going to benefit from, from what we do here today, and if we don't do it, nothing's going to happen. Everything will stay status quo. So all the partners that we have here today, these, these five agencies, uh, definitely know what needs to be done, they're out there, they know what communities need help, and the census tracts, and that's how all of this will play out. I want to thank everybody in here, I don't want to start mentioning names, but everyone in this room and all your volunteers and your employees for putting this together, and I want to thank, uh, uh, the Commissioners and Audrey and everybody else for working toward, uh, this goal. And Anna, we, we dumped so much on Anna, it's, it's unbelievable, and, uh, she's very bright as well, and we're, we're lucky to have Anna. Thank everybody here. Oh, and by the way, uh, I wanted to compliment another person in this room, Ed Runyon. I don't know if anybody read Ed's article on the ARPA money? He did an A through Z, up and down, on what the county did for our ARPA dollars, and I don't think anybody could have wrote that any better than he did. So Ed, you can add this to that, to the next one that you do, but that was one great article, and we thank you for all the positives you put in there. Thank you.
What a great day this is. A partnership, a team. I mean, in Mahoney County, we've always said that when we three Commissioners got together, we started a team, and that team just start rolling, and everybody just start coming. And now, it wasn't an easy run, and guys just giving me the eyes over there, but it wasn't an easy run, but we all are together for one purpose, and that's for the Mahoney Valley. And, uh, I echo what Dave and Anthony have said about everyone that was involved, uh, it's a continuing thing, there's going to be bumps and bruises, but we're going to succeed. Our young people in Mahoney County have great educational systems, uh, we have great higher education, we have Eastern Gateway, we have MCTC, we have all these educational systems that could train our young people. And how great would that be to train them, get out of college, and come right here in the Mahoney, stay in the Mahoney Valley and work in a job that will pay you enough to sustain a family? So my, my whole purpose, my vision is to keep our young people here, and in order to do that, this group, which are the business people, professionals in this area, will help bring businesses here to keep our young people here. We need to keep our families together, and you know what? We could talk about having a business and building big companies, but who do we want to be in those companies? We want our families in those companies, we want our children to come home and have a seventy, eighty, ninety thousand dollar job with Bennys to keep them here and raise their family. Look at Forbes, what are we, the top ten cities in the United States to live? Here, we don't give ourselves, we don't pat ourselves enough on the back in this valley. You know, we just don't, we're, we're like this, but we need, we need to put it together. And I think this is the start of that, I'm excited. Uh, I think this is going to be a great thing. In the future, we're going to see things, and I know damn well, it's going to be before twenty-fifty, because we have to see what it's going to look like in ten years. We'll still be here, God willing, but, uh, I wish you all the best luck and everybody that was a part of that, our team here in the county, Audrey, Anna, and everybody that put this together for Mahoney County, finance people, and all of you, so, let's just keep on rolling, and let's make sure Trumbull County kicks in their million.
Carol, could you say that again? I couldn't hear you with your mask.
I should kick in their millions. I'm sorry.
Okay, um, Anna, you know, you are never taken for granted, believe me. You are at the, the forefront in everything that we do initiating all the action that we need from, uh, so, let's, let's get everyone together and, and in a picture, and let's, you know, we'll endorse the check.
It is endorsed.
It's not endorsed until
Taken straight to the bank?
It's in the bank, just
I'm going to suck on voice for you guys.
Exciting day.
See, I have to hold it because when all these tall people hold it, they put it over my head, and I'm, me and Teresa will stand side by side, so we're
Hold an edge.
Okay, scoot in, scoot in. There you go.
Good job.
All right, I got it.
Go anywhere yet, guys? Should we start signing autographs?
Well, the only autograph they want is the ones that are down there. That's the only autograph they want.
Because I don't need to, right? Josh, why weren't you in there? Josh?
That's, I'm with you on that. That way my faith is not
All right. Oh, thank you, thank you all for coming. I know you're busy. I were too busy for this, right? Okay, that's what I said, but Jamaica, the chat. It actually
Jamaica, Elalo, maybe where to be going.
What a commitment. So, but he brought up one more.
One more.
Figure decimal. You need to make it's figure decimals, like we know. Yeah. Saw you in the picture.
No. It's all good. It's all good.
Yeah, that's what I said.
Okay.
Okay. Don't let it go anywhere.
Dave, I did want to say, too.
Yeah.
I also wanted to thank the Prosecutor's Office, who worked diligently with us to get, um, the agreement down and go back and forth with myself and Anna to make sure that we had everything in place. Um, one of the things that the Commissioners were able to do with this was, some of the dollars that came into our general fund through revenue replacement, which were freed up, we were able to use for this, which then gives this money a little bit more flexibility, so that it not only goes into the QTC areas, but it goes to the whole county as a whole. And that's what we wanted to be able to do, so that when they go and get some of the other ARPA dollars, maybe from the city or one of the other ones which might hit the QTC, we were able to do it this way, and the Commissioners, um, are allowed to give to the Port Authority, they're our economic development arm, and that's how we were able to do that.
Can I ask a question? Anna, you might know this, or Audrey, you might, if in the state of Ohio, they do not, other counties do not use their, their funding, they turn it back, is there a way that we could request more funding? Is there a way that we could request more funding from either the federal government or the state?
As far as we know, they haven't said that they're going to reallocate any of the funds. I think they're going to call this back.
Believe me.
That have come through this ARPA money through the state or directly to us is basically have it all encumbered or we're taking it back. They never said.
And giving it to someone else.
We'll give it to somebody else.
So can I say, can I ask a question? Is it possible to write a letter to the state because we are using our money and you two and the prosecutors? And the port and everybody that's involved is putting it together. Write a letter to the state and say that we have other projects that are of great importance to Mahoney Valley. If you, uh, run where there's more money, we would like to give you the list of those projects. And if you could fund them for us, we would, we would, you know, be more appreciative for our residents.
Absolutely.
Carol, we'll just take the MCO fund request letter out. We'll just write ARPA in it and we'll rescind it.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm sure they'll be coming out with some guidance on that or reallocation.
And I think if we get ahead of it and put initially, just put a couple of the projects we would like to try to fund.
Yeah, they will. Um, it would be at the end of 2024, as far as anybody not having anything obligated where funds could come back. They did do with the CARES Act where there was some reallocations. But that was the only one that I know that they.
Well, the state still, they got so much money that they just randomly overnight come up with some new $700 million programs and $80 million here, $100,000 there. So the opportunities will steep, keep flowing through the state and the partners that you have in the room are, are. Going after all of those opportunities from Mahoney County. So I sit on a lot of the boards, I represent you guys on the board. So I know that they are actively pursuing. Funds in additional to the ARPA money that we receive. So Sarah said she has some good ideas and the capital budget's coming out. We'll be meeting about that. So there's a lot, a lot happening in the county right now.
Yeah.
I'm excited.
Good things.
Mahoney County's on the up.
Okay. All right. Thank you, everybody. We'll move on to facilities. Resolution approving, oh, is Jim here? Oh, go ahead, Jim. I'm sorry.
This is the resolution approving the moral obligation payment, $2,630 in 14 states. The Youngstown Water Department, it is per fire line services performed at County Line Road. And it's because of incorrect billing.
Right. Hazmat.
Uh, this is a resolution, uh, asking for approval for a moral obligation for the payment of $1,438 to industrial environmental. Uh, monitoring instruments. Uh, this is for repairs to our, uh, multi-ray five gas detector.
Thanks. Human resources.
Morning, everyone. This is a resolution approving the agreement with Vision Benefits of America to provide our employees with the voluntary supplemental dental benefits. Um, that's effective January 1st through December 31st of 2024.
Okay. Sheriff's Department.
Good morning, everyone. Uh, G is a resolution approving moral obligation payment of $3,221.52 to Cleveland Ford Lincoln Horn. For additional repair needed on a 2014 Ford SUV that was not covered by the original purchase order. H is a resolution rescinding resolution 23 dash O5 dash 006. That was for the purchase of one 2023 Ram 1500 Classic Express Quad Cab. Uh, this is for the National Auto Fleet Group due to the timing of the vehicle production and the estimated amount of $44,161.76. And commissioners, uh, this morning, the sheriff's here to, uh, speak to.
Morning, Commissioner.
Sheriff, please.
Yes, okay.
You know, only you should speak of anything that's titled Bearcat. And John and.
John Alberdi as well, the commander.
I is for the purchase of a Bearcat, which is an armored vehicle. Uh, it's used for, uh, Mahoney Valley CRT team, which commonly is known as our, our SWAT team. This vehicle is basically what is out there for all of law enforcement. This company is one of the only games in town. It's the best company that produces these vehicles. Um, the vehicle that we had right now, um, is incredibly outdated and it's, and it's very large. It's hard to use in smaller neighborhoods in, in different situations. This Bearcat is going to help the men and women. Uh, because our Mahoney Valley, uh, our CRT team and our drug task force is a multi-jurisdictional task force with officers throughout Mahoney County. Some in Trumbull County, some in Columbiana County that all pitch together. I'm here with John Alberdi. John Alberdi is a sergeant with YPD. He's the commander of our CRT team. Uh, he wants to say a couple of words, but, uh, I can't thank the commissioners enough for recognizing that we needed this, trusting us with this purchase. Uh, anytime you hear in the news, and it's all the time, there's a barricaded subject here. There's a, there's a hostage situation there. It's these men and women that are always going to those calls and they're in those vehicles because there are always firearms and, and guns involved. So this not only is very, to me is very beneficial to the community, but, but also saving, uh, and protecting the men and women. So I, I can't thank you enough for this purchase. Uh, it, it, it's, it's just really awesome. But that's, thank you so much.
Good morning. I, like the sheriff said, I, I, thanks to everybody involved, doesn't even touch the gravity of this purchase. You know, I'm fortunate. I do teaching with a, a SWAT organization and we get to travel all over the state. So we have a lot of interaction with different SWAT units from Cleveland on down through Columbus. And I could tell you, if there's, if there is one I don't know of, but this vehicle that we're purchasing is the top of the top. But this is going to do for our mission capability as a team is just like I said, I, I've used the word a couple of times today. It's epic. It's an epic purchase. You know, like the sheriff said, we do do mutual aid. We've gone so far as to FBI in Cleveland. We've went to Mansfield over the years, some different places. And, uh, like I said, I don't think there's any team that I know of right now in the state that possibly has this. But, uh, like I said, the thanks for this is, um, no words. Um, you know, the sheriff, the credit again for everybody, but. If you guys aren't familiar, we had that incident, Howland, that hostage rescue. We had some officers that were wounded there. Uh, but we did get the people out and the subject, the bad guy was stopped. And when we addressed this issue about some of the equipment deficiencies, sheriff, commissioners and everybody involved, you jumped right on that. And got this thing moving and what I would say is a record, record fashion. And like I said, our mission capability as a SWAT unit is, we're pretty good. This puts. Big exclamation point. So thanks.
Thank you, John.
The other thing too, that's really beneficial is that this isn't as much, this isn't, like you said, one of the last bad calls they were on was in Howland. So it's not just for Mahoney, Mahoney County. You know, it's just like our, our, our drone unit, the canines we have. Our equipment is to be used when somebody needs it and especially our neighbors as well as Mahoney County. So it's, uh, it's going to be very, very beneficial.
Thank you. Thank you.
Can't wait to see it.
Pretty impressive.
Is it in yet or?
It takes about a year to build.
They build it from scratch.
It's just a chassis right now.
It's like my car.
It's not 2050. You'll make it, right? It's a year. So you can.
I'll make it that long.
It'd be, it'd be like that, uh.
You could pull it up in front of my house, John.
Who's the.
Well, honestly, we'll still have it when all of us are retired. That'll still, that's planting, that's planting a seed as well.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, you're right.
Yeah. If we were built, it'd be like a Johnny Cash song. It's a 51, 52, 53, 54 automobile. You know, so we're glad we have professionals building it. Oh, excellent. Thank you, Sheriff. And I know that when you came to us, you know, it's a no brainer. You know, public safety is, is primary for us and, uh, it has been. And speaking of public safety being primary for us, uh, the only renewable levy on the ballot that, uh, that we have in the county. Is coming up in next year's ballot. Tonight will be the first public hearing for the, for the, uh, justice tax. That, you know, when we, when we talk about funding, the sheriff, 911, the prosecutor and the coroner. This isn't part of their funding. This is their funding. So, uh, it's extremely important because of the amazing job you've done, Sheriff, and your crew and your department and the task force and John Alberdi and, and all the partnerships we have. You know, the mutual aid is necessary and it keeps all of us safe. So thank you. Okay, I guess we've done them all, right? Wow. Okay. Now, motion, a motion to approve resolutions.
Motion to approve resolutions, letters A through I.
Second.
We'll call.
Mr. Hunter Medio Righetti.
Yes.
Mr. Travickany.
Yes.
Mr. Ditzler.
Yes. Wow, we've had a lot of good things happen. And before, uh, we let everyone disperse, um, I want to, well, go through any, anything else, Anthony?
No, again, um, to everybody here in the room, uh, Vision 2050, Sheriff Green, Mr. Alberdi, uh, well done. Uh, as Dave had said, that the need was basically demonstrated to us. We understand what you're all up against out there. It's a crazy world. And, uh, now we gotta have bears and who knows what'll be next. Maybe helicopters and drones, but thank you. Thank you for what you do and for what you do for our safety. Sheriff, you've done a hell of a job. You've taken that department to new heights. And, uh, we, we owe it all to you, Mr. Alberdi. It's a pleasure. And to all the partners in here, thank you for what you do. And also I want to compliment, uh, the decorations. Look very nice. Thank you.
But, um, whoever did, uh, probably you did the decorations. I have one more wreath to put up. It's on the peak of my A-frame. You know, it's about 35 feet, you know? Maybe Ron can give you a boost when he's getting that paint on that last one. Carol?
No, I just want to thank everyone and Sheriff and John. This is like great. We three have always been big components of safety, especially our safety forces and our justice. And I just can't wait to see what this looks like. I mean, I saw the monster you'd have. But this is going to be exciting. And as you could say, we're probably the only group of Mahoney County commissioners in the state of Ohio to actually have teamwork.
I've witnessed that many, many times where interfighting, uh, really gridlocks the sheriff and when he tries to do pro actives in the community and all law enforcement. And there's a lot of inner fighting. Not a whole lot gets done and that's never been the case, uh, for my 11 years as sheriff. So I'm, I'm proud to partner with all three of you.
I mean, we have a team. We don't always agree, but we could sit in the room, fight it out.
Oh, the three of you are about as different as can be. I could tell you.
We all belong, but you could do what you have to do and combine to your own area. But when you come out, you come out with a resolution. And you just get over it. It's like the old fashioned way. It still works.
Well, yeah.
I gotta say that.
I hear you. And like I, well, Audrey?
You already said, we have the sales tax hearing tonight, um, for the justice tax. That's going to be at 5:30 at the Cavelli Center. Um, I know the sheriff will be there and he's going, yes, 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 it is. This is an example of the proactive things that can be done when government is done right and when the resources are available. And so a lot of that will be discussed tonight and just demonstrated tonight. I think the commissioners, as far as what the justice tax is, it has been since its inception separately accounted for. It has gone for the uses of what it was supposed to and intended for for legislation. And they have done that. They have upheld that. They have supported it even when it wasn't supporting itself. They have done what they can to make sure that justice has been stable in Mahoney County. And so we're, tonight we will talk about that and let the public know what has been done. So I'm looking forward to it. And it's renewable.
Permanent?
It's five-year renewable.
Hold our feet to the fire.
Another five years. But yes. So I'm looking forward to that. Um. And Vision 20, um, 2050.
I know.
Okay.
Well.
I won't say anything about that. Okay.
Anna, anything you'd like to add?
I'm just glad to be part of the projects that you guys have implemented over time. One thing I'd just like to say about the Valley Vision 2050 is that it really is, they have the plan, the pretty plan and everything like that. But the commissioners had asked them to provide a, a budget and an outline of the outcomes that they anticipate to have under this initial, uh, contribution. From Mahoney County. So there, there's an outline. It's not just your, your, um, plan, you know? What I'm trying to say typically the general plan that gets put on a shelf, these guys have it mapped out and this first year. I think we will be seeing successes right, right out of the gate with the plan that they've submitted to the commissioners. So I'm excited.
I think that it reminded me of something that, you know, collectively, all of us in this room. We have a destination in mind for this plan. And what is it they say? If you don't have a destination, any road will get you there. You know, but we have a destination and we have a map and we have a plan and we have a specific. Plan to get us there, a destination to get us there, roadmap to get us there. So, um, anyway, that's, uh, something I'm looking very forward to with a lot of great people and, and partnering and, and. Moving forward. So thank you to everybody really in this room. Everyone, thank you. And before everyone leaves, would the Valley, uh, Mahoney Valley Partnership Group that was up here earlier come up one more time? Cause I want to get, uh, one more photo Megan, uh, with Audrey and Anna in the photo. And I'm remiss for not bringing them in and, and, uh, making sure that they're a part of it because, you know, we.
Yeah, we gotta put Josh in there too.
And Josh, exactly. You know, because we, you know, we have a lot of, uh, great people that, that do a lot of the dirty work. And we want to make sure that, you know, we get some of them dirty people in the photo. Okay, what's that?
Got out of the photo.
Oh, I know. I thought it was safe.
We need a picture with the three of you guys, Sheriff and.
Oh, with the sheriff.
What about me?
Sheriff, we're gonna, we're gonna sit on your shoulders and take a picture with you too.
Very nice.
Okay. All right. With that, I'd ask for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Mr. Righetti.
Yes.
Mr. Travickany.
Yes.
Mr. Ditzler.
Thank, yes, thank you.